Good evening. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures?
Mr. Fields, this evening, we've continued to provide opportunities for members of the public to engage in person and virtually or via phone or email. We will take questions because tonight is a board legislative meeting, whereas at committee meetings, it's comment only. Tonight is question based on reports before the board takes action. I'm sorry, comments. Geez, I missed a month. So it's comment only. Questions are taken at committee meetings. Those who were in person had an opportunity to sign in for the general public prior to 7:30. They will have an opportunity to speak at the point of general comments prior to any general comments that came in via email publicly tonight. Those who want to comment on specific reports, either in person or virtually, virtually, please provide your name, address, and send it to the email boardmeetingquestions@up at rbsd.org. Provide your name and address and the specific report you'd like to comment on this evening, and the board will take that into consideration before they take action. You can also phone that comment in. Please make sure you identify the specific report at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. The board will read that comment into the record before taking action. Those who are in person, again, please come to the microphone, provide your name and address, and obviously, here in person, you'll have an opportunity to comment more quickly upon the report before the board takes action. We will again go with people that are in person first, and then go to virtual call-ins or emails after that. Happy to update as we go through it.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will come to order. Welcome back. There was a closed session on July 27, 2022, from 5:30 p.m. until 6:29 p.m. for real estate and litigation matters, and this evening, from 5:30 p.m. until 7:35 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there are personnel, real estate, and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hag.
Present.
Mr. Des Newers.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Ms. Lamar Murphy.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
And Mr. Fields. Present. Thank you. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda? So moved.
Second.
Are there any amendments to offer?
Yes, there are actually two amendments for tonight. One with the personnel report that was to address slight language changes to an MOU that was going through the report tonight, and the second was on the donation report where a donor had wanted to revise their donation, and we expect it to come through in September.
Okay, fantastic. Will anyone move to add the described items to the agenda?
I'll move the amendments.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda with any approved amendments has been moved and seconded. All those in -- oh, we already said aye, thank you. And we already said oppose, so motion carried.
Can we just approve the amendments?
Oh, did we approve the amendments? All right. Should I just keep reading this then? Okay. The agenda with any approved amendments has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The minutes of the combined work session special meeting of June 21, 2022 is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Director Williams has reported the secretary.
Thank you. The report of the secretary for June and July of 2022 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Director Neal has the report of the treasurer.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. The report of the treasurer for June and July 2022 are the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. No students just yet. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Daniel McGary.
So I was going to begin my comments tonight by saying good evening, President Brown, so I apologize. Good evening, Vice President Fields, members of the board, administration, teacher staff, students, parents, and members of the community of Upper Darby School District. I hope everyone has enjoyed their summer and found some time to relax with families and friends. As we prepare for the first day of school on August 29, 2022, I wanted to provide you with an update on the additional funding we received following the adoption of our budget, our staffing efforts, health and safety plans for the up and coming school year, facilities, projects, and my goals for the year. Under Act 1, Pennsylvania public schools are required to adopt a final budget by June 30 of each year. Unfortunately, there have been years when we have had to develop a budget and adopt a budget prior to the adoption and approval of a state budget, and this was the case this year. Please keep in mind that the original state budget proposal had Upper Darby receiving close to $24 million, but we have never received this level of funding, and we did not anticipate we would this year, unfortunately. We did, however, anticipate some additional funding, and through our budget development efforts, we decided to reduce the tax increase from 2.5% to a little bit over 1%. Thanks to the hard work of our parent advocacy groups, our Board of School Directors, local elected officials, Representatives Curry, Zabel, and Senator Carney, we received more than the anticipated $5 million we included in our final adopted budget. I want to thank our chief financial officer, our CFO, Craig Rogers, for his confidence in handling of the budget process for the 2223 school year. We actually received almost $6 million more than we anticipated. Craig actually took it upon himself to roll the dice a little bit and budget more before we had a state-approved budget that allowed us to decrease our taxes. Now, with that said, we are still facing a significant funding gap. This additional funding is a big support. We still face the reality of COVID-19, and our facilities are in need of significant improvements. I hope that the continued focus on fair funding eventually brings the Upper Darby School District a dollar amount we rightfully deserve. I know many members of our Board of School Directors have fought for more funding for our schools for years. The harsh reality of underfunded schools has directly influenced the current national teacher shortage. Years of underfunding and public attacks on the educational profession have certainly helped create the national teacher shortage we currently face. As I'm sure many of you are fully aware of by now, there is a significant shortage of available professional educators throughout the country. Here in Upper Darby, our principals, directors, and human resources team continue to do their best to open the school year with all teaching positions and support staff positions filled. Right now, we have approximately 96% of our professional staff positions filled. At this time, we are still in need of specific teaching positions for special education, reading specialists, English language learners, business, world languages, math, hourly tutors, and science. We will continue to keep vacant positions posted until they are filled. There are discussions throughout the country where some school communities may not be able to open schools on time, and some districts are considering a four-day student week in order to address current staffing shortages. We are planning for a full opening of our schools with in-person instruction on August 29. In order to make this happen, we have asked teachers at the secondary level to consider an additional course for additional compensation during the 2223 school year. I'm happy to report that any current secondary professional teacher vacancy will be covered by a current Upper Darby teacher. I want to say thank you to our Upper Darby Association, UDEA, members and their leadership, Dr. Matt Alockway, the principal of Upper Darby High School, Mr. James Finch, Assistant Principal at Upper Darby High School who's in charge of the schedule, Ms. Kelly Simone, the Director of Secondary Education, Dr. John Council, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Equity, for meeting with me throughout the summer to help establish a plan to make sure our students have educational opportunities. I would also like to acknowledge the District Home and School Team for their willingness to meet with me throughout the summer, to process through this information, and to provide their concerns and feedback. To be specific, the Home and School Association is very concerned about teacher burnout. I want to be clear that the current plan is not the best long-term educational solution. We too are worried about teacher and administrator burnout. Public education should be more fully funded, and we, as a society, need a better plan to encourage people to pursue education as a profession. Thankfully, we started our conversation regarding the national teacher shortage months ago, and we began to consider our current schedules and make adjustments. It has been a total team effort to make sure our schools will be open on time for 2223. There are a few realities we still need to keep in mind regarding teacher shortages in transportation, regarding shortages in transportation and with substitute teachers. As a district, we will be sending out information on our plans to manage days with high teacher absenteeism and low substitute teacher availability, as well as days when we are lacking bus drivers. The last few years have certainly been difficult, but the support of this board and our community has helped us manage the adversity we have faced, and we will continue to need to support one another because the current staffing crisis and potential ongoing impact of COVID-19 will challenge us again this year. During the 2223 school year, there may be times when our ability to open school for the day may not be possible because of staffing, and we will be sharing our timeline for making decisions for personnel-related school closures with you prior to August 29. Please keep in mind, this would be a last resort and strictly related to our ability to cover classes on days with higher teacher absenteeism and a lack of substitute teachers. This evening, the board will be presented with three resolutions that we hope show our support for our staff and teachers. One resolution will be an update to the school calendar for the 2223 school year. We would like to add three half-day in-service days for teachers. After meeting with teachers toward the end of last school year and during the summer, they have asked for more time to grade work, communicate with families, and prepare engaging lessons. A second resolution is an administrative recommendation to provide our teachers with more compensation for their work and commitment to this community. A third resolution is another administrative recommendation to increase the average teacher stipend for those teachers who are willing to be the teacher of record and instructor for an additional course at the secondary level. The Central Office team has spent countless hours throughout the summer finding out ways to incentivize teachers to remain with us and to join the team. I'm very thankful and appreciative of the collaborative efforts of the administrators and UDEA leadership. As I stated previously, we will be opening schools on August 29, 2022. During this school year, we will be adhering to our adopted health and safety plan, and we will be providing students with multiple instructional models. The key elements in our health and safety plan are relatively the same as last year. Please practice proper hygiene, including hand washing. Please stay home if you are sick. Individuals who test positive for COVID-19 will, at this time, be required to remain home for five days, but they may return to school on day six if symptoms have improved and they wear a mask. I know that will bring a lot of conversation as we move forward, but I did want to be clear about that in my report this evening. We will continue to monitor updated guidance throughout the school year. Students who are opting for either asynchronous or synchronous instruction will be required to adhere to more strict rules. The appreciative -- I'm appreciative of the work of Dr. Christine Kelly, UDEA teachers, principals, and supervisors who have helped the district develop online instructional manuals for teachers to follow and for our students and their families to follow. We have also scheduled classes, especially at the secondary level, where students and teachers are not included in classrooms with multiple instructional models when and where possible. We have updated our high school course catalog to reflect courses that will only take place in person after discussions with teachers. We recognize that some families prefer virtual learning, but we are encouraging a full return to in-person instruction and asking those students and families who are asking for virtual learning to please respect the opportunity we are providing and to follow the rules and requirements we have established. As we continue to get our schools ready for the opening of the 2223 school year, I'm excited to share the progress we are making with our facilities updates. It has been a long and arduous process, I'm sure I don't have to tell the board that, to get to where we are, and COVID-19 has certainly added to our facilities' challenges. The good news is that we are making progress. The 8201 Lansdowne Avenue project, previously known as our Transportation Gulf Building, continues to move forward. We do have some material delays with the project, but we are hopeful for a partial opening of the building by November and a full completion of the project by early 22 -- by early 23. The Eronic Elementary School addition and renovation continues to move forward. If you drive past the building, you will see that the addition is progressing nicely, the new bus loop and parking lot continue to come to life, the previous administrative offices have been removed, and the project is still on path for a full completion by August of 23. At this time, central office staff have moved out of the building and are located at various locations throughout the district, with a vast majority of individuals working out of Upper Darby High School. Unfortunately for Dr. Alockway, he has a lot of central eyes around him. We are confident that the second phase of new bathrooms for Beverly Hills Middle School will be completed by the start of the school year, and the new turf field and track at Beverly Hills Middle School will be completed sometime later in the fall. We still have to navigate some outside construction work at Beverly Hills Middle School, but we think the end result will be worth the inconvenience. BHMS will also have a new parking lot and improvements to stands located on the back of the property. Drexel Hill Middle School's new track and field will be completed sometime in the early fall as well. DHMS will also see improvements made to stands and the adjacent athletic fields. Upper Darby High School has a new and improved health and fitness room, and we will have improved tennis courts. The district will be sharing heating and ventilation projects at high-priority schools using American Rescue Plan, ARP, and ESER Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Funds in the near future. We are also reviewing plans to improve the auditoriums for Beverly Hills Middle School, Drexel Hill Middle School, and Upper Darby High School, and considering our options to improve the condition of the library at Upper Darby High School. We are completing an updated facility study that will include a review of locations for a new elementary school, and the district continues to move forward with our efforts to build a new elementary -- a new middle school in Clifton Heights. We have a lot going on, and these are just a short list of the ongoing major facilities improvements. This time each year, I announce my goals for the school year. Some of these goals will continue to be short-term as well as long-term goals. I want to recruit and develop and retain the best staff, continue to improve our communication internally and externally, emphasize social and emotional learning opportunities for all students, continue to emphasize a strong elementary educational foundation in all subject areas with a focus on student growth, continue to provide and promote and reinforce an inclusive learning environment for the students and community we serve, and continue to implement the Act 13 evaluation process, new process, for professional employees, temporary professional employees and administrators in pre-K through 12. I'm thankful to our Board of School Directors and my team for their support as we continue to open schools for in-person instruction for the 2223 school year. Vice President Fields, I'm sure many are happy. This concludes my report for this evening. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. We will now have an update on the June 21, 2022 Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting. Director Neal will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. We had four agenda items. The first one was a wellness policy annual update, which was informational. The board was presented with an update on the work accomplished over the course of the past school year to improve wellness across our district. The second item was the light-speed classroom management, which requires board action, which will be approved -- which will be going to a vote tonight. Dr. Christine Kelly presented the light-speed classroom and monitoring system. This system will allow teachers real-time visibility of student activity and control over their online spaces. Please note, we did -- the board did question whether or not teachers would have the ability to record Chromebook screens, and it came back that they would not be able to, that that's not a functionality that would be afforded to the district employees. The third item was the 2022-2023 professional development calendar. This also requires board action tonight. Dr. Christine Kelly again presented the calendar in accordance with District Policy 333. And the fourth one was regarding policies. It requires, once again, board action tonight. The policies were field trips, student discipline, student expression and distribution of materials, controlled substances, and electronic communication devices. There were no public comments on any of the agenda items. Vice President Fields?
We will now have an update on the June 21, 2022 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Director War Savage will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
Thank you very much, Vice President Fields. There were two items that we reviewed in that particular meeting, both of which had required board action. First one, forbid, was the 2022-2023 final budget presentation in compliance with the Act 1 timeline. The district administration presented the 2022-2023 final general budget -- fine -- the, tongue-tied, final general fund budget. There we go. The final general fund budget, did it again, has taken all available and relevant information into consideration and is presented with a 1.01 tax increase. That's 1.01 tax increase, not 2.5. The second item on the agenda was policies, which also required board action, policy 004, membership, which was changed to a specific bog, and policy 808, food service. There was a public comment, but as Vice President Fields said, all those are chronicled within board docs.
Thank you very much, Director War Savage. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
Vice President Fields, I just wanted to clarify a previous statement I made regarding the Education and Pupil Services Committee. We did vote on some of those items at a special voting meeting right after the committee meeting, so I do apologize on that. So they are not required board action tonight. We actually already voted on those items. I apologize, I forgot we had that special voting meeting. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for the clarification, Director Neal. You second, I think I was asking for any comments from the board. This is for the Instruction Curriculum Report. Any comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. All right. Director Mitchell?
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I just want to just review it a little. And I also want to note that we did not have a meeting in July, so the things that you see are capturing from, you know, since we had our last board meeting on June 21. So I know it looks like a lot, but it's sort of accumulation of six weeks. So I would like to congratulate our retirees and thank you for their service to the district and its students, and we wish you a safe and healthy retirement. For those newly appointed staff members, I'd like to welcome you to the family. And we have several change in status for people who are now considered professional employees, and I would like to congratulate them on that particular accomplishment. Also, I wanted to acknowledge, as Dr. McGary said, our extenuating staffing circumstances and the efforts that we're going to hire really experienced staff members. I am impressed with everyone that I hear about. So I appreciate the hard work of the entire team and our teachers, who are hopefully helping to steer people in our direction. So with that, I move for the adoption of the report as stated.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Are there any comments from the board?
Second.
I need a second. Okay, second. I heard it. You just didn't hear. Again, are there any comments from the board? Okay. I have a comment, right, which is, if I don't get to see anything else, the return of two very competent and amazing administrators, namely the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, is -- will be one of my prouder accomplishments, and I'm happy to have you on board, and I am in awe of your commitment to this district. In light of what Director Mitchell said about the difficulty finding people to teach, it is even more difficult, and I am so glad I don't have to do it this year, to find superintendents and other administrators. And we are lucky and proud to have these two coming back for us and for their commitment to this district, and I'm happy to have it. Those are my comments. Maybe I spoke too soon. Any comments from the public?
Joanne Namavong, 133 North Pennock Avenue. My comments tonight may offend some of you. It's not my goal. I'm just hoping that you will thoughtfully consider the things I have to say. I recently saw a Facebook post about the job fair the district is having this Thursday evening, so I took a look at the job postings on Talent Ed for support staff, and I was able to confirm my understanding that the district does not value support staff since, for the most part, they are paid poverty-level wages. Do you really expect to hire people when the pay scale is so low? I'm here tonight to speak about the shameful pay rate for support staff at the district. These are some of the postings. District-wide secretary, full-time, permanent, $25,075. That's $13.21 an hour. Secretary for the manager of facilities, also full-time, $25,250, $12.95 an hour. Secretary for the principal at Upper Darby High School, $24,750. That's $12.69 an hour. Upper Darby attendance office clerk, full-time, $23,700. It's $12.15 an hour. Upper Darby High School Discipline Center Assistant, full-time, 10-month, $12,600. Works out to $7.75 an hour. I'm going to give you an example from a current employee of the district who is working full-time as a secretary. Net pay every two weeks is $750. The rent is 77% of her take-home pay. This employee and many others are forced to be on public assistance, taking food stamps and medical assistance. People may take the jobs that you're posting because they're desperate, but you will not be able to retain quality but you will not be able to retain quality personnel because you're exploiting your support staff. And I know you're going to say, well, we'd have to raise taxes. But I think that good leaders would know where to look. They need to look at the top and see where cuts can be made. I just find it troubling that you, as school board directors and the head of Human Resources, have, apparently have no problem with the message they're sending out to everyone in this district as to who you value and who you do not. But I'm also happy that you are raising the teachers' pay, but you need to consider the pay of everyone that works here. People are struggling. They can't live on $12.15 an hour. These are families that have one wage earner, single moms, single dads. You got to treat them the same as everyone else. Thank you.
Lee Jordan, 90 Pocum Lane, Drexel Hill. First of all, congratulations, Dr. McGary and Mr. Marshalack. I really didn't understand the wording, though, the resolution to terminate and reelect. So I don't know if you can answer that, or... So was, were the contracts up? Is that a question that can be answered or do I have to wait for public?
Well, this is really supposed to be comment only. I can certainly...
You're right. It is supposed to be comment.
Should I wait till...
I can talk to you about it afterwards.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, it's just, you know, some people are asking me, and I'm like, to tell you the truth, I'm really sure. I mean, whether the contract expired, I haven't gone back and looked at my notes. Also, congratulations to everyone who got promoted, especially Jo and Niagara. I know the family very well. As I always say, I always, you know, preach and I'm on platform about promoting students who go through the district, families who stay in the district because they really understand the heart of this district. I'm happy to hear about all the resolutions, you know, the extra pay. But I guess, is there an incentive for the current teachers to recruit their friends into the, into the district? I mean, listen, we know it's challenging out there, and we know especially challenging for Upper Darby School District because we're so big. But I just didn't know if there was like, you know, you know, you bring a friend on or something like that, something to think about. So maybe I missed it. Maybe it's out there. If not, maybe it's an idea. So that's all. That's my comments.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried.
First, I do, I do, before I comment on me, and I won't let Ed take the microphone, I want to say congratulations to Joe and Ms. Flanagan, who are here with us. If you want to stand up and have the board recognize two administrators. You know, both, both homegrown. We've typically had pictures. So, you know, Don, if you want to stand up and embarrass them, we can get a picture with them and put it out there. And while they're coming forward, you know, for me, on a personal level, I think, as Lee Jordan had commented, and first, Mrs. Namavong, I'll reach out to you following this. I usually don't respond to questions, but without, we are working very hard to improve those salaries and will be, and I'll be in touch with you. I'm flattered. This is where I want to be for the rest of my career, so the opportunity to stay here and to work with people like Ed Marshalack and Craig and John Council and the administrators that are back in the room, it means a great deal to me. I hope I get to finish my career here. And Don, your words mean a lot to me compared to where I started a long time ago. And to this board, thank you for your vote of confidence. And to Kyle Berman, the relationship that's been developed with you and your leadership here in the school district, I can't thank you enough as well. So thank you to everybody for your confidence in me and the team here. It means a lot.
Policy Report First Reading. Director Disnoyers.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. So the policy report first reading, there is no vote required, but I do have a few comments about the changes being made to those policies. So, trying to keep it short. The policies and administrative regulations, or ARs, under consideration for a first reading this evening are Policy 100, Comprehensive Planning. There's a change only to 100 AR0 only. Policy 103, Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students. Policy 104, Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff. Policy 138, Language Instruction Educational Program for English Learners. The only thing here is a new AR, 138 AR6. Policy 202, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students. Policy 246, School Wellness. Policy 606, Tax Collection. And Policy 913, Non-School Organizations, Groups, and Individuals. As a reminder, these changes will be presented at a subsequent committee meeting and then must undergo a second reading at a future board meeting prior to taking effect. This evening, I will provide very brief descriptions of the updates to these policies and ARs. More complete information about the updates to these policies can be found in the Summary of Policy Changes First Reading Document, which is posted to Board Docs. The updates are as follows. Policy 100, 100 AR0 has been updated by PDE to incorporate the new link to the online comprehensive planning resources provided by PDE to address specific elements of the updated comprehensive planning process. Policies 103 and 104, the contact information for the district's compliance officer, Title IX Coordinator, is being updated at the request of you, of administration. Policy 138, there are no changes to Policy 138 itself. PDE issued an updated document, State Required Reclassification, Monitoring, and Redesignation of English Learners, which has been included as a new AR, 138 AR6. Policy 202, the policy is being updated to address the enrollment of students whose families move out of the district during the school year. This update was requested by administration. Policy 246, the policy is being updated to better describe the ways in which the district contributes to students' wellness. This update was requested by administration. Policy 606, and this one impacts taxpayers. This change is driven by an amendment to the Local Tax Collection Law, a PA law, that reinforces the general rule for when a property owner in the district does not receive a school tax bill. But, but does carve out a limited exception for different treatment. In particular, there is now a very, very narrow path for first-year owners to request a waiver of penalties, interest, and other fees while being ineligible for discounts. For property owners that do not meet all the criteria to be first-year owners, the change reinforces that school taxes are due whether or not the property owner receives a school tax bill. This change will not become effective until the 2324 school year. That is, for tax bills mailed in July 2023. Phew. And Policy 913, earlier this year, PSBA issued a revised model policy for Policy 220, Student Expression Dissemination of Materials. PSBA has now issued similar updates for Policy 913, Non-School Organizations, Groups, and Individuals. Policy 913 addresses materials and activities of non-school organizations, groups, and individuals. And for consistency, the same terms, distribution, and posting were changed to dissemination. There are also additional updates to the policy and to the corresponding ARs. Vice President Fields, that concludes my comments for Policy Report First Reading.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director Disnoyers. Do you want to go into the second reading?
Okay. The Policy Report Second Reading is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second?
Are there any comments from the board?
Vice President Fields?
Go ahead.
I would like, I have some comments. I would like to make, I would like to comment on the changes being made to these policies. So... The policies in BOG under consideration for a second reading this evening are: 004, Membership Change, that's a change to 004 BOG0 only. Policy 218, Student Discipline. Policy 220, Student Expression Distribution of Materials. Policy 227, Controlled Substances Paraphernalia. Policy 237, Electronic Communication Devices. Policy 808, Food Services. As a reminder, if these changes are approved by the board in this meeting, they will be adopted and implemented. This evening, I will provide very brief descriptions of the updates to these policies in BOG. More complete information about the updates to these policies can be found in the Summary of Policy Changes Second Reading Document, which is posted to Board Docs. So, Policy 004, there are no changes to Policy 004 itself. The State Ethics Commission has issued a new Statement of Financial Interests that gets filled out by Board Members and Administrators each year in a new, easy-to-fill-in format. The following description applies to updates to Policies 218, 220, and 227. The U.S. Supreme Court case, Manoy Area School District versus BL from 2021, and several additional related court cases, highlighted the heavy scrutiny that school entities face for discipline of a student based on speech that occurs outside of the school's campus. The Supreme Court decision outlines three characteristics that impacts a school's authority to regulate a student's off-campus speech and states that school entities may address student's speech originating off-campus that meets any one of the three criteria outlined in the decision. Therefore, Policies 218, 220, and 227 are being updated to include this new information. More complete descriptions of the updates to each affected policy and AR and the updates' relationship to the Supreme Court decision can be found in the Summary of Policy Changes Second Reading Document on Board Docs. Policy 237, Electronic Devices. To keep pace with technology used in educational settings, revisions to this policy provide an updated definition and additional options for school entities that allow students to use electronic devices during the school day in approved locations for educational purposes. Language and references to telephone paging devices were removed from this policy since they were dropped from the PA School Code. Policy 808, Food Services. Language related to provisions for alternative meals being served to students. If the student is not eligible for free, reduced-priced school meals and the student's account reaches a negative balance of more than $50 in a school year was removed from Policy 808 Food Services based on recent food service audits conducted by the PA Department of Education. And I should also mention, related to this policy, that the district participates in a federal program whereby all students may receive free breakfast and lunch. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Did you already say that the report is in the hands of each Board Member? You did? Okay. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Supplies Report Approval. Director War Savage.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board?
Second?
Sorry, sorry. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Transportation Report. Director Lamar Murphy with the Facilities Report.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report and the Donation Report are in the hands of each Board Member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second?
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please, are there to comment?
And we should just say thank you for the, for these wonderful donations from the community. We really do appreciate them, especially having visited Primus and seen the condition of those picnic tables. So thank you to Ms. Shaner and her group for that.
And if I may also add, I was notified that they are adaptive, adaptive tables. So they're not just regular picnic tables. They're adapted for our special needs students.
Lee Jordan, 90 Pocum Lane, Drexel Hill. So also, in regards to the donation report, there is a donation, well, thank you to everybody, but there's a donation, the first donation, from the Peter Coyle family. And Deb is a very good friend of mine. And so I sent her an email today to let her know that it was getting, you know, recognized this evening. So she sent me a text back saying, today is Pete's mom's birthday. They were all going to be together. They're actually probably watching this right now. This is such good karma to have it memorialized tonight. And I guess, you know, when it comes to donations, I wish there was a way that we could do a better job of, you know, making it known to the community. Because a lot of people don't even know that you can donate. Now, Pete passed away in 2018, but you can make donations to the school. In this case, it was to the Iran McLibrary because Kate Dueski, we all love to death. But, but maybe somewhere on the page, you know, to thank everybody, have it like running. Because, you know, I think it's just something, if Deb wouldn't have known unless I was looking through the report, that it was getting, you know, tonight was the night that they were going to adopt it. Just a suggestion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. There is no Food Services Report. Director Haig, Finance and Budget Report.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Collateral Assignment Reports. There is no report for the Committee College. Director Mitchell, Report from the IU.
There's no report. Our, we had our meeting last week, and we have our committee meetings. So I'll report on both meetings in September.
Legislative Council, Director War Savage, anything? Okay, fantastic. Menno Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Director Haig.
No update.
Home and School, Director War Savage.
Thank you, Vice President Fields. I think Dr. McGary touched on the hallmarks of that meeting that we had. I believe it was, what, a week and a half, two weeks ago up to this point? And I want to commend our parents, especially those that are associated with the Home and Schools, for how thoughtful they critically process all the decisions that the administration has to make that they're asking them for, for input on. So we just, we really appreciate you.
I appreciate Damian coming out to the meetings like he does, too. I know it's a lot, all the liaison positions with the board that the board has created over the last couple of years. I know it's a lot of nights out, so I appreciate... I know it's a lot of nights out, so I appreciate that and board members who attend. We have, you know, a fall, morning and evening, Home and School meetings, individual meetings, and then district-wide Home and School meetings each fall and each spring. And I want to thank Ms. Rhonda Buford for her leadership and helping establish that as well. The communication has dramatically improved over the last several years in the district, and the outreach has been huge. And I want to say thank you for joining and the administrators who join those meetings. I get on a call with Home and School, District Home and School, and there are almost every single principal and most of cabinet attend those meetings. So that's, it's a really cool engagement. To Damian's point, the most recent communication, we have healthy, we've finally got to a place where we have very healthy back and forth, that the Home and School parents are not afraid, which is great to voice their concerns. And they are very concerned about teacher burnout, teacher concerns. They're very concerned about movement toward a three-day or a four-day student week. So we processed through a lot of discussions, also discussions about student conduct and teacher relationships, what they're seeing outside of school and seeing inside of school. And that led to follow-up conversations where some of the key members of the District Home and School are looking to really figure out a way to formulate, and they have acronyms now, which is really cool. So if you get to a place of an acronym, you're really serious about it. ME RET teams and other teams that they're trying to create parent groups to forge better relationships and break down barriers between Home and School. And we had a follow-up conversation about that. Ms. Wendy Elgar will be reaching out to this parent group with us through use of our Title I Parent Involvement Funds to see how we continue to bridge the gap and work together. But there's a very eager group of Home and School families that want to collaborate and bring the community together, and it's come through some disagreements and back and forth. So I appreciate their confidence in, the term that they use is holding us accountable and not holding us accountable in a way that it's like, I don't like you or I want to fire you. It's holding you accountable in a sense that we care about your success and the success of the community. So the conversations have been really good. This Thursday, we'll be at Pastor Nate Goodson's church for a community meeting at 7:00 to further community engagement. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, Damian, I appreciate your support and your attention to the meetings.
Thank you for, thank you for that, Dr. McGary. PSBA representatives, Director Williams, anything?
No.
Okay. Nothing from Director Disnoyers? No update? Policy liaisons, Director Disnoyers?
About Policy 707, Use of Facilities, the board recognizes this is, has, is an item of discussion in the community, and the board has been getting feedback on this. And there was a presentation and discussion at the June Finance and Operations Committee meeting. There will likely be another presentation and discussion at the August Finance and Operations Committee meeting with updates to the policy to follow. It is taking some time, but we want to do, we want to come to an agreement that is fair for the district and fair for the community, and we appreciate any patience you can give us while we get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Disnoyers. Communications, Director Hague or Director Mitchell?
I have nothing, but I did want to thank our staff, who's doing a great job of communicating timelines to families. I've seen less buzz in the community of like, when am I going to find out what, than I have ever seen. So good job. And you'll be getting our board report within the next week.
Fantastic. Thank you both. Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, Director Lamar Murphy.
So there's no report at this time, but there is a retreat scheduled for September, so I have more updates from that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Old business. Is there any old business from board members? Excellent. Is there any new business from board members? Wonderful. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. I have, I will read the first and only name on the list. Lee Jordan, coming in for a hat-trick.
Lee Jordan, 90 Pilgrim Lane.
Famous school board alumni.
Yeah, right. My question's about the Iran Mac addition. So it looks different to me than what the drawings that were approved. So, and I did get online, so I don't know if they were updated. So in the new addition part, like, I don't know what's getting built on top of the roof there. So I don't know who can answer those questions for me. I mean, were there changes made? And maybe I missed them. I don't know, the initial plan. Because it's all online, right? I think I got the most recent...
Just to clarify, you're talking about what's like on top of the roof? That's your question? So basically, is there anything being added on top of the floor that was approved?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Okay, so...
Where can I go for that? I mean, maybe it was approved and I missed it, or it just looks different than what I remember.
All right. I appreciate your questions.
Okay.
Someone can get back to you.
Somebody will get back to me. Okay. And then, one more thing. Dr. McGary, you mentioned the tax bill relief, the decrease in taxes. Do I understand that right? So from the two and a half that was passed, so decreased to one? No. So everything's staying the same with our tax bills this year? Yes or no? I guess that's all I need to know. Yeah.
The board didn't pass a 2.5% tax bill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you can, if you watched that meeting, you'll see we passed a 1%.
The 1%?
Right.
Okay. But nothing's changing in the bills that we have to pay if you get the discount by the end of the month. That's bottom line, what I need an answer to. Correct?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So we owe what we got billed.
I think if you email, if you email, I think someone from the district's budget office can get back to you.
We can answer both those questions in email.
Okay.
The quick answer is, my explanation is, we started at 2.5% in the preliminary budget, and we rolled the dice on getting at least $5 million in increase from the state, and that allowed us to reduce the tax increase to 1% prior to the final budget, prior to the state approval budget.
Okay. All right. That's it. So somebody will get back to me on those two things? Okay.
Ms. Buford, are there any questions or comments online? I know there's, I might have heard you say so. I don't, I don't believe there are. So with that, is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.